All right, going to call the meeting to order. It's about 7:01, we're going to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
.........................................................
Okay, the next order of business is our student showcase this evening. And Paul Brandigan and Delaney Brennan are going to be presenting to us on the Start Strong program at the Middleborough High School.
Really happy to, I want to introduce you, Delaney Brennan, who was the student coordinator for Start Strong for the class of 2020. This was our fourth year with the Start Strong program, so Delaney was actually the first class to actually do the orientation program in the fall of her freshman year. And every year, the person who is the student coordinator selects the person who will precede them to do the next year. So, Delaney was chosen back in March of 2016 and began her, actually earlier than that, and we started the application process with orientation leaders, and she just has done a marvelous job, so I wanted to over to her to share about the program.
Hi. So, to start, I just kind of want to show you this video that was put together by Sean Sisliano that kind of has some highlights of the program.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Yeah, okay. So, as you could tell, everybody had a lot of fun. I'm just going to kind of go over the breakdown of what we did and all the activities we did and for what reasons we did them. So, we did a team building game group, which you saw the people running with eggs on the spoons. Those team building games, they were able to work together as a team and see like that you don't like do everything alone, you do things as a team. And that kind of like, that was the first group activity we did. So, it was very, it was like our first hands-on, and it got them excited, and I think that set the tone for our whole program. And then that was like the startup. So, yeah, so, we had about 117 orientation leaders. So, from seniors to sophomores, we had everybody helping, not just student council kids, but we had everybody from the whole school. It was great to see everybody come together and work as a team to make this the best program we could for the incoming freshmen. And then there was 130 out of 160, 130 out of 160 freshmen. And I think that was the biggest turnout we've had out of all of four years of doing Start Strong, so that was really good to have that many people show up. So, yeah, so, the seniors were in charge of council rooms, which is where the freshmen would go and meet up, and they would go over, they did a goal-setting sheet, they would just kind of reorganize and do little games within their council rooms to kind of break them out of their shell a little bit. So, seniors were in charge of the council rooms. We had juniors in charge of those team-building games, which I already kind of talked about. And then they also ran workshops, which we did, we did a workshop called toothpaste, which every freshman got like a little travel-sized toothpaste tube, and they would have to squeeze the toothpaste out onto a paper plate and then try and put it back in to the toothpaste with the toothpick, but it didn't work. And the moral of the workshop was like, you can't, you can't take back your decisions. Once it's made, it's made, and you have to live with those choices. We were trying to get that point across to them as they're entering high school, which is, that is such a big idea in all aspects of your high school career and like life later on, but so many decisions you make in high school you can't take back. So, we wanted to kind of like prove that to them with a little toothpaste fun, I guess. And then, and then the sophomores did a tour, and they also did a scavenger hunt. So, they did the tour and to kind of show them, and then the scavenger hunt was set up so that each of them, so that they had the engage part, where they had to do it themselves. And they were all given like a little riddle, and they had to figure out which location that riddle was in, and they had to get a puzzle piece. You saw like the completed puzzle at the beginning of the video, and it said like, "Welcome Class of 2020." And it was just a cute little like way to incorporate that in all of the pieces. But yeah, like I was saying, each activity we did like had a certain reason to it. The skating was so much fun, and everybody was helping everybody. I think I saw a couple of freshmen helping an upperclassman, which I thought was hilarious because they were showing us up, and it was really funny. And like, everyone was just having fun, like, it's such a, like Mr. Brandigan said, I was the first freshman class to participate. So, to see it, to see the program grow from where it started and then to have like all those different perspectives has been such a, almost weird feeling, because I participated as a freshman, so it was like, oh, like, this is so like, it's almost like insane how much it is given to you, but then, as I'm like going on, it's like, oh, like, that helped me so much. And I think for me, it was rewarding, and I know that for the freshmen, like, a couple of them have come up to me since school started and said like, "Oh, like, this helped me. Like, I know where all my classes are because of the tour, because we give them their schedules, and they get to see where their classes are." And which other freshmen, like, "Oh, I have a friend who has no idea where their classes are, but I know where all mine are." Like, having those freshmen come up to me and saying like things like that has been such a good feeling, because I know that the program was successful. Part of the program, so seeing the freshmen transform from registration to seeing them when they were leaving is such a drastic like difference. Their behavior when they're walking in, they're like deer in headlights. They are terrified, you can tell, they're like, "What am I getting myself into? We're all screaming on the bridge, like welcoming them in." They're like, "Oh, my God, like, what is going on?" And then when you see them leave, that's how they are. They are the ones screaming and excited, and it's just very rewarding to see that, like, you just changed that person's feeling going into high school. And I know, I was extremely nervous to go into high school, I was scared, but this program helped me, and I'm glad that I was able to help them come in as well. But, yeah, and then I also, for you guys, have two pictures that I can just pass around. One is our group photo, and then one is just the orientation photo. And then we also have T-shirts for you guys that say like, "Start Strong Freshman Orientation." And then I can answer any questions that you guys have. So, I'll pass these around.
Just as Delaney's doing that, just for the school committee and the community to know that the, it's a two-day program, and on the first day, it's about becoming a sachem. So, a lot of the team-building activities Delaney talked about was really focused upon the meaning of the black and orange and such. And then the second day really focuses on the academic side, so that's where they get their schedules. We do, the freshmen will do a workshop with me about really starting fresh and starting new, that, we have no idea who they are, so it's really an opportunity for them to totally recreate who they want to be. And it really ends with that barbecue and then a closing session. An alumni always comes back every year to talk about, and we try to get an alum that is many years out, so they can really talk about reflection of their career choice, but then also what it meant to be from Middleborough. So, just a thank you to the community and to school committee and to the district for allowing this program that is fully funded by the district to make this happen every year for our kids. It really is something pretty special that our school is able to do this kind of a program for its ninth grade each and every year. The transition to ninth, ninth grade, we know is the hardest transition and one of the most important, and the support of this program and to allowing our upperclassmen to really evolve their own sense of leadership and giving back and paying it forward is just really profound to watch it. So, just a thank you to that.
Thank you. Do members of the board have any questions?
I think this is a wonderful program, what happens every year. I've been up there, I've seen it. And another thing that happens, I know, is what's nice, at least for me, and I hope for people in the community to see, are the different colored shirts that the different classes wear, and when they're leaving school, they're out there, and it's very colorful, and to me, that's great. Do a nice job, thank you. I can see you probably headed for education, aren't you? Good, thank you.
While he's doing that, I want to, Madam Chair, if I may. The program is awesome. I said at last meeting, until you have a student go through this, it's hard to really, you can say it all you want, you can put videos up, and I'm going to tell you, it means a lot, but when you see your son or daughter come home after that day and is loving it, that is just awesome. And that's that, although you might have a little anxiety that first day of school, there isn't as much, because you've got, you've given them that orientation, that they're already starting to feel like this is their place, so I really appreciate, and I appreciate that you guys do this.
Yeah.
You guys were there, you know what it's like, and you elevate, which is awesome.
Yeah, just I agree with you. Because it's so, because it's all student-run, like, it's all of us, like, we don't, of course, we have Mr. Brandigan like helping us wherever we need it, and he's kind of there for the logistics, but like, everything we do is all by us, which I love about the program. It's not like a piece of, it's not like an already pre-made schedule given to me, like, "This is what you're doing, this is it." Like, I spent hours on hours on hours working on making this program what it was with the help of so many others. Like, the list goes on of specific people that I can just thank, I can, there's so many people that I can be thanking that helped it to become what it was, and it's all students, which is, I think, what makes it what it is. So...
Delaney and Paul, thank you so much. I was writing a couple of words down that just kind of came to my mind as you were both speaking, and the first thing that came in my head was powerful. What a powerful program, in the sense that I wrote down, I'm hearing culture, I'm hearing community, I'm hearing connection. And the fact that, Paul, you were able to empower 117 students to then go on to empower and enable, you know, 130 incoming freshmen. Delaney, you gave the example that you had a couple of freshmen come up to you and say, "Hey, because of the program, I was able to find my class," but what really landed on me was, they came up to you. That's amazing that they even had the connection already before day one with you, and I'm sure it happened to many of your colleagues who were facilitating the Start Strong program. So, I can't thank you enough on behalf of the school committee for the powerful work that, Paul, you're leading, and the powerful work that you students are engaging in in that building, because it's translating to the community, and it will have far-reaching effects, not only in Middleborough, but as you embark on college and career. So, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Did you, sorry, Greg?
Still, oh, Mo stole a little of my thunder here, but I thought it was amazing that you were volunteer, you almost has me volunteers as you did participants, and that speaks volumes to how exciting that must have been for them, the freshmen, to see that. I remember my first day at high school, not here, but another town, and walking up a ramp, but it was the seniors yelling at us, "Not nice things." So, I just thought, what a nice difference it would have been to have welcoming and showing around and helping rather than hazing, so, great job, thank you. And thank you for the shirt, we appreciate it.
Yes, please.
If I could, Delaney, I just want to thank you on behalf of the school system. I look at this picture, and I don't know if you can see this at home, but it's basically a mass of humanity. There are 250 high school students, well over basically one out of every three, or more than one out of every three students at the high school, assembled for two days at that high school, two of the hottest days of the summer, too. But some of the activities and some of the things you've done, I recognize from programs such as PCC in the past, but I know how unifying they can be and how profound, how profound an effect they can have on young people. So, I thank you for all your work and your leadership, because it's a great exercise in leadership, and I, all I've heard from, about this program is your leadership was outstanding. Mr., I think Mr. Brandigan said it to me half a dozen times, how remarkable your leadership was. So, thank you for doing that, because this transfers, this translates into school spirit, it translates into culture, it translates into climate, and it translates into making Middleborough High School a better place for all students to live and learn. So, thank you very much for all you've done, and thanks, Mr. Brandigan, for the program. It really is a great program.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys. Thanks, Delaney.
Maybe if you could come down the row and shake folks' hands on the way by and...
Yeah. Thank you.
Picture with you as super.
Can we get another one of you in the super?
Yeah, of course.
It's a break.
Yeah.
All right, smile.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have on the agenda is public comment, and I believe we have somebody in attendance this evening.
My name is Rob Powers, I live on Lilo Drive, and I just wanted to speak for a few moments tonight to you about a really important issue, which is ballot question two. A little bit about myself, I've lived in town for three years now, my first home that I've ever owned, so that's kept me very busy. I also, I'm in my 10th year of teaching at Upon Aquit, just down the street. I teach high school social studies there. I'm also the student council advisor, so I've worked a lot with Paul Brandigan and Middleborough Student Council throughout the years, and, man, they set the high-watermark for social-emotional learning with that staff and those students, so we always try to emulate that good stuff at our school. But I wanted to come to you tonight because I'm deeply concerned about question two, which would lift the cap on charter schools here in Massachusetts. If question two was passed, there would be 12 new charter schools that could be authorized each year in perpetuity by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. I'm very concerned as an educator, but also as a resident of this town, that we already lose $450 million each year before the cap lift in Massachusetts to charter schools. And I looked at the numbers for Middleborough, and in fiscal year 17, the projection is that the lost aid would be $269,264. And then even after the shortfalls in reimbursement by the state, that leads to a $93,330 shortfall. So, I've emailed you extended remarks with footnotes, because I'm a teacher, so I have to cite my sources, but that's deeply troubling. We can't run the amazing programs that we have in the Middleborough Public Schools when we lose that much money already. And I know that it's an issue that a lot of people don't know about in our community. We send 1% of our students right now to charter schools, but those numbers are just 1% of our students. And I think what concerns me the most, too, about question two, is that would also widen the schools that would get priority under this. And under that widening, under our accountability rating in recent years, whether or not you agree that that accountability rating tells the whole story, Middleborough could be given priority for a charter school. So, I'm hoping that this committee, as the safeguard of this school system, as the trustees of this school system, will consider, and I'm told that it will be coming shortly, hopefully, passing a resolution firmly stating that you are against question two. I just think it's really bad for our district. I think it creates a separate and unequal school system in Massachusetts, and I think that we can do a really good job educating our students like we already do, no matter their background, no matter their circumstances, if we have that opportunity. So, I just wanted to implore you to hopefully take that up in a future meeting, and thank you for your time. I know this is a lot of work, and I appreciate it as a resident and educator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, for your comments, and thank you for your letter. It was very detailed and very informative, I think the entire board has received it. Since the item was not on the agenda for discussion tonight, I'm just going to ask the board if this is something they'd like to consider for an item for discussion for our next agenda, which, the next meeting's October 6.
I would, Madam Chair, I would suggest that we put it on, and we can discuss it then, we can not discuss it then. Ironically, I had someone in my face on the opposite side of this question just 25 minutes ago, and I throw out special education, and they deer in headlights, because I know what gets lost, unfortunately. We don't want to always talk about it, but there are some students that will be just harmed by this, but I think it should be put on, and at least for a discussion.
Couldn't agree more.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powers. It looks like we'll put that on our agenda for October 6 as an item for discussion.
I'll be back. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes.
Mr. Powers, you live in Middleborough, and you teach at Upon Aquit, and tomorrow night is the Friday night football game between Upon Aquit and Middleborough. I'm wondering what sideline you might be standing on.
At the advice of my counsel, I'd like to plead the Fifth Amendment. I will have a very conflicted heart tomorrow night.
Good answer.
Thank you.
The next item we have on the agenda is recognition. Did we have any recognition this evening, Mr. Lynch?
No, we don't.
Okay. We're moving on to discussion items. The first item, we don't have our student representative present, reports from school committee members. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, sorry. Yes, I would like to talk, I went to the high school building committee event last night, and I thought it was a very well-put-on event. I've been involved in town politics for more than 10 years, on and off, and one thing I really appreciate about this event was the transparency. Almost every facet of this project is being displayed, from, you know, what education plans they want to look at, what kind of, you know, design plan, site location, the process of how they're going to do all this, who's involved, who's doing what. I saw it was a really good event. They did three breakout sessions, and I tried to float around all three, and I saw good public input for all three events, three subgroup. So, I thought that was good to have public input and transparency. I think my appreciation to the high school building committee, they're doing a great job.
Mr. Tivenoni?
I just want to make mention that I don't like to start something with an "I," but I have had an opportunity the last two days to participate in something, although today I had to cut it a little bit early, I was a little exhausted. But there's something going on right now with regards to the building project, it's the visioning for the educational plan, and without going into real depth, because we're not done yet. Two days in, there's one more to go, but I have to mention, to see the people that are in that room, the educators, the teachers, the administrative staff, the students, and the participation of students, when they're sitting there and they realize what they're doing is going to have no direct effect on them, but they're out there, and they're very, I mean, very candid. We've had some candid moments, that almost "oo" moments, but I truly appreciate the students being involved with this future, because they're the ones currently going through the process of education in Middleborough. I think they have the best view from the opposite side of the educators, and we've seen some of those moments where the agreement isn't there, so we find out why, and the "why" is always the best part. So, I've been so fortunate that I've had a schedule that has allowed me to be there at this event the last two days, and I've never been more impressed, and I've never learned so much about what goes on in the high school, and how it goes on, and how education's going on up there. I've sat in awe, I think my mouth has been open, just sitting there listening to some of the stuff, and I can't wait to put together a little report on some of the things that, regardless of what we do with the high school building, the physical building itself, I think we're learning a lot about education in the high school right now, and things that we could even implement prior to getting there. So, it's been awesome, the two days, I have not said, "Oh, this is a waste of time." I don't think anyone said that. I think we've all sat there and said, "Wow, these are awesome moments." So, I'm a little tired, so that's why it's not polished tonight, but it is amazing.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Just briefly, just wanted to let everybody know that the Middleborough School Committee's Facebook page has 226 likes as of about half hour ago.
Yay. Thank you.
So, I just wanted to make a brief comment. I also attended the Middleborough High School Building Project Community Engagement Forum last night, and I learned a lot. It was eye-opening. I think the things that I took, the thing that I took away from it is, it's so much more than building a new high school. And I think the community needs to know that. What we learned last night was this project is going, this building and this culture and this concept of 21st century learning that's going to go on in this building, it's going to be in existence for 30 to 50 years. So, we're not just impacting the next generation, "Oh, it's my kindergartner, it's my third grader." It's literally the next number of generations to go through this school district. What a huge, huge responsibility we all have as a community, and it is no, like, what I learned last night, there's just so many moving parts to this particular project. What does it mean, 21st century learning today and then for the next 30 to 50 years? How do we build a structure that accommodates that? It's just mind-bending, quite honestly. So, we need, I implore the community to please lean into these conversations, attend when you can, be part, engage with the website and ask questions if you can't get to live meetings. It is so important that your voices are heard and that you participate in this monumental task for our community. So, that's what I learned, but thank you.
If I could, Madam Vice Chair, I just wanted to make a comment. There was some Facebook, social media comments today that were regarding the television coverage. It was not live last night, to those folks that do watch on television. It was not live last night, it was recorded, and it's going to be edited and looped. There are some concerns about the format, that it was really not made for TV, if you will, and it was indeed one of those, you had to be there's. And there were three sessions going on at once for the majority of the time. There was a presentation by the Drummy Roseanne Anderson, the architect, by Compass Project Management, our OPM, by Mr. Brandigan with regard to a snapshot of the high school, but there was also, most of the work that was done was done in the three individual workshops and the breakout sessions, if you will. So, with apologies to the folks out in the public who are going to watch this on cable and might be a little confused with what's going on, the sound product, the sound quality might not be as good. My apologies to MCAM, but this was not a made-for-TV evening. It was, well, like I said, it was one of those, you had to be there. Hopefully, you'll get the feeling of the evening, and hopefully, some of these folks that are there watching and saying, "I need to know more," will reach out to the committee and come to more committee meetings. There are going to be a couple of additional public forums coming up. So, with regard to both social media and last evening, I wanted to make those comments, because they were, it was a discussion that was on the line today.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch, appreciate that insight.
Yes.
Yes?
With respect to last night's event, and when you talk about a not, really not made-for-TV, would you say it wasn't really made-for-TV because it wasn't someone getting up and lecturing at people? It was more interactive and conversational, so the entire community had a say in it?
Right. Unless we had everyone mic'd, the sound quality will not be of the quality that folks are used to from the production of this meeting or selectmen's meetings because it's just simply, it went from one person to another person, back to the architects, back to them, back to the educational planner, back to the folks. So, it was a lot of discourse that went on, a lot of back and forth, which was the design of the evening.
Very productive.
And so, it was well-attended.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Stevens?
Just wanted to add one more thing about that. When I first walked in and I saw the auditorium empty and then I saw the breakout rooms spread out around the hallway, I was kind of surprised. I'm like, "Oh, that's going to be kind of crowded." But you were two feet away from the person giving the talk and they were asking you questions. So, I think it lent a lot to the intimacy of the conversation that was happening. So, it was well-designed in that respect.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we're going to move on to the MEA report. Frank?
Good evening. I wanted to go to the forum last night, but I wasn't feeling strong enough to actually do that. I was glad actually to be back at school this week. Had my last chemo therapy treatment last Thursday, 21-day cycle and then probably an extra week before some of the heavy-duty stuff is completely out of my system. But things are looking up, so kind of looking forward to that sort of stuff. Mr. Stevens, I'm sorry, but I had handed out some stuff earlier and there's extras that Mrs. Piattelli has, so feel free to take some of that stuff. Just some vote no-on-to information, a bumper sticker, and we have some MEA pencils and patents for you guys to kind of have. So, we've, you know, finished negotiating all of our contracts. We will be having a vote on the cafeteria contract soon. I'm pretty sure that you guys have seen that MOA in its entirety. Hopefully, the ESP one will be finished pretty soon. And right now, that's kind of where we're at, so. Any questions?
Questions?
All right.
Great news. Thank you. It's great to see you here this evening. Thanks for your update.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report and Mr. Lynch?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I have a couple of reports tonight. We don't have a long agenda, but I do want to comment on some trends that we've noticed with regard to enrollment. Southeastern Mass has experienced declining enrollment. Middleborough has experienced some declining enrollment. The numbers are not shocking right now, but the general trends, I want to give you some idea. MEC is up 4% in our population. HPB is down slightly by 3% and that could be changed by one or two students here or there. We have, the MKG is pretty much flat-lined, has not lost any students, in fact gained one. We have the Nichols Middle School, which has remained a 0% change from last year at the current counts. And our high school has gone down by about 5.8% by our latest numbers. That basically is due to a large class leaving and a smaller class coming in. We graduated 209 and we brought approximately 184 students in. We have to look at those numbers and make sure those October 1st numbers are exact and at that time, you'll get a full report of the enrollment at the high school. And we have to straighten out that freshman class to make sure our numbers are correct. I have slightly different numbers than were quoted tonight by Mr. Brannigan and this was a copy that was developed and I want to make sure those numbers are correct before I get quoted on those. So, the trends are there, down a little bit at the high school. We lost approximately 70 students to Bristol Plymouth and a couple of other schools. So, more information to follow on enrollment, but I just wanted to let you know some of the patterns going in and some of what we're looking at. So, any questions on that at this point? Like I said, more solid data to follow.
Historically, how many, either percentage or count-wise, of the VP kids and the private other high school kids return, let's say during their grade nine year, within the first couple of terms, first semester?
Mr. Gilz, I would say that Mr. Brannigan may get a better idea on that, but I know we take back five to 10. Would that be a safe number annually, Mr. Brannigan? Yeah, five to 10 annually, depending on the year. So, that was my experience last year, so.
And with respect, we tend to lose the same physical number of students. Like, for instance, Bristol Plymouth takes the same number every year because they have a specific amount that they're willing to take from Middleborough. So, if we put a class of 240 or we put a class of 200, it's the same number. So, percentage-wise, it works weird on the percentages, but it's the physical number that I always look at when we see that in October, after the October 1st date. It'll be interesting to see if there are different tweaks on those numbers because I do know that that does happen, that block on schools, yeah.
My second item on my report is sort of handed over to Mrs. Kathy Piattelli, Business Manager. As we begin this year, we sort of hopefully complete the negotiations with regard to six contracts, but we open up the bus contract. We've extended for a year and hopefully we'll be able to wrap up a bus contract. So, Mrs. Piattelli has a couple of comments on that.
As Mr. Lynch said, June will be the end of our actual fifth year with first student. We had a three-year contract with two one-year options and we exercised those options. So, we've signed a contract with a consultant to help us put the bid together. It's the same gentleman we used five years ago. His name is Jim Flahive and he is a former Laydlaw manager, so he's very well-versed in transportation because Laydlaw used to be trash and transit. So, he has agreed to help us again this year. We've signed a contract. We're going to be meeting with him in the next couple of weeks, but I guess what we need to know from the committee is how do we, you don't have to answer tonight, but two-tier, three-tier, what's the thought process moving forward?
There was at one time a school bus committee that we started and we started talking about the two-tier versus three-tier to look at it more in-depth. When we originally started this five-year contract five years ago, we had an option presented, two-tier or three-tier, and we ended up staying with the status quo. A year and a half, two years later, we started looking at bus in general and maybe combining middle and high school to go to a two-tiered system. And we started that and then we stopped doing that because there were other things going on that were really more pressing. One of my other, one of my concerns is when we start talking about two-tier versus three-tier is we have another whole piece that we don't know about, which is where are we going after in 2020? I know it sounds, that's still within the realm of this contract. It could be at the end of an extension of a contract and we always have the ability to end a contract early if we had to. But making a substantial change today, when we may have a substantial change coming in 2019, 2020, I question whether it would be even wise to make that. I think we should talk about it, try to figure it out, but to do it in the next month and a half without enough community input, I think it would be very difficult. Aside from that piece, there are things in the contract that I'd really like us to discuss, like starting a contract year with buses with less than 250,000 miles on it potentially or less than 175 or so many new ones a year to make sure that we're not getting hand-me-down buses from other communities or buses that have been run right to the, almost to the end, that you see magnets on the front of buses because they're constantly broken down or we're getting reports of breakdowns. I just want to make sure that we do something, maybe we get a look at that. I don't know if there's a way of tweaking that, but that's just something that I would like to maybe even put on to the agenda for our discussion, discuss bus.
Certain criteria you want in the next contract?
If we have the contract, the current one thrown in to our Dropbox?
Sure.
And maybe we can look at it because maybe there's something there that is something that we could see. Maybe there isn't. But I think the concerns that I've always had is sometimes some of these, some of the buses have, I know they've passed inspection, they're inspected every day, they're safe, but batteries and this and that and...
Yep.
"Long in the tooth" is what comes to my grandmother always would say, "A little long in the tooth." So, I would like to not have that, potentially.
Madam Chair, we might put it on the October 6th agenda? Is that something we'd like to do and have a discussion item anyways? We don't have to have an action item for discussion?
Put it in the Dropbox.
And a copy of the contract put in the school committee Dropbox?
Yep, sounds great. Good?
Yeah, I would just comment on the mileage piece, that the higher the mileage, the cheaper the contract, or the less expensive the contract, excuse me. But, and diesel engines last a long time, but they need to be safe.
Well, they were all safe. I don't think they're not safe. I just, sometimes they get a little long.
Absolutely.
They're inspected four times a year, every quarter. They are inspected, both the little buses and the big buses. And this current contract states that no bus can be any older than 10 years, so, and again, that goes to the price, so. But we can certainly change the criteria in the next upcoming one, too.
Great, so it sounds like we've agreed to put it on the next agenda and make sure we have the current contract in our Dropbox so we can kind of evaluate that and move from there.
We'll do.
Excellent. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is MSBA update and I'll put that over to you, Mr. Lynch, because the first one's the community forum. Do you want to discuss that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have discussed it a little bit, but I want to maybe just summarize it. We had Drummy Roseanne Anderson, our architect, and Compass Management, Tim Bonifati and Kristi Murphy, who presented last night. Mr. Brannigan presented last night a snapshot of the high school, a slide presentation, and which will also be on the website, which is www.mhsbuildingproject.com. www.mhsbuildingproject.com, I have to get used to saying that. But it's a wealth of information on that website. Everything we do in any meetings is put on there, is placed on there as quickly as possible. Minutes are placed on there as soon as they're approved. And like I said, and I told the folks last night, this is a totally transparent process. There's no predisposition as to what will be done. There'll be an exam, there's an examination currently going on at the high school and we'll determine whether we can renovate the current high school, whether we develop a renovation addition suggestion or a brand-new high school suggestion. And all that will be vetted through the MHS Building Committee and the community at all times. Last night was the beginning of the open discussion with the public, but meetings are open, meetings are posted, and meetings are open to all the public, all the citizens of Middleborough, and you're welcome to attend. So, that was the first of three community forum nights and hopefully the folks that could not make it last night can attend in the future. As I mentioned, the forum, the manner in which the meeting was done was a little bit different by design. And it, as Mr. Stevens said, when he walked in, it seemed a little, because when you walk into one of those, you expect to go down in the auditorium and listen to somebody talk, talk, talk. But this was designed so that we could do a presentation and then divide the group up into three. So, that's what it was. And like I said, it's not a made-for-TV documentary, but it is something that maybe somebody can look at, listen to, and gain some insight and perhaps bring another question forward. So, that was last night. If anybody has any questions on that, I'd be glad to respond to that. I was happy to see that we had, Madam Chair was there and Mr. Stevens was there and I know that other people tried to get there but could not make it, so.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Do we know when the next two meetings are going to be yet?
I don't know if we set the date of those meetings yet. Mr. Jivononi? The two other forums?
The two other forums have not been put in stone. The next meeting of the building committee, though, is Wednesday, September 28th, 5:00 PM at the Town Hall. That's Wednesday, September 28th, 5:00 PM at the Town Hall is the next school building committee meeting. And that's open to the public and that's usually better recorded because they have a real high-end system there for recording that. So, that is what's scheduled for Wednesday, September 28th. And it's also, that information is on the MHS Building Project, mhsbuildingproject.com on the left-side column, the next building committee meeting.
And on that date, we will probably determine the dates of the two next forums. There have been some suggested dates being entered, but there has to be some, we're going to try to have one down at Oak Point, so we have to work with the folks down there with regard to the use of their facility. So, I know there have been great talk about that and I know that Rich Young has been involved in that. And one with the council on aging, I think was the other plan at this point, a couple of popularities.
Madam Chair? The approximate date, the approximate date is around the 14th of November for that second forum. That's the approximate date.
That was the draft date.
That's the draft date. It's sitting in their schedule, which the schedule of this project is sitting on that website as well, but it does say an approximate date. They're trying to, they have to schedule it with the facilities, so we're hoping to have something firm quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Jivononi.
So, that sort of covers Middleborough High School update. Now, the MEC update, the roof has been completed. We're still waiting on the certificate of majority completion to be returned to us. The company that did the job this summer has not been paid a penny yet.
They just submitted their first rec for not the whole thing. There is some retainage left, so.
So, we hopefully will have a budget report on the MEC and a report on the skylights and the ladder. Those are the last two additional pieces that will complete the roof. And then there's an inspection done by the commissioning agent, Russo Barr, with infrared and they determined basically the job that was done and make a final completion so that we could, we would make final payment at that point. But I would tell you that in the budget, there was $893,000 for construction of that roof and the company that did it came in at $640,000. And there were some things included in the budget that were not done. There were some things included in the budget, or not included in the budget that had to be done. So, then there's the balance of change orders and changes and when that financial package is complete, we'll certainly report out to the school committee and also hopefully be able to get a pretty good number for the next meeting of the town, so the next town meeting, so we can report back. And that's the MEC. Any questions on that? Mr. Stevens, sorry.
I had some further questions on the forum. Is that okay to go back to that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. My one question is, there are a lot of public input, you know, they're taking notes on the post-it board. Is that going to be documented somewhere? Will there be some way, like, people can go on and see what public comments were made?
Mr. Stevens, through you, Madam Chair. I believe they've collected all of those and I believe they're going to document the meeting last night, as much as they possibly can.
Okay.
And they'll, there's always the, they're posting frequently asked questions as they come in and they're also, I believe, going to post that sort of data, that information that they have. I know they all took notes. I know they collected all the notes.
Okay.
But I can certainly check on that and report out to the school committee in my Friday communication tomorrow and also to the public at the next meeting.
Sure. So, it sounds reasonable?
Okay.
Mr. Jivononi?
So, for instance, they were probably some big, large, big post pads and information notes were taken on. I'm sure photographs were probably taken of them for documentation. Maybe if we could hit Kristi, our owner's project manager, with an email, she might have them, maybe call them, put them all together and then put them in a package for our next building meeting and then maybe it'll get put online under those notes. Or a separate tab called forum documents.
And the DRA may already have a process that they're going through. So, that's what I'm hoping is that that's...
And usually, they summarize it.
Well, my, again, it was well-run last night, so I assume that was being processed, but I just don't want to let the assumption be out there. I figured I'd ask a question.
Good question. Thank you.
I learned a lot for myself about the new building stuff. I'm not sure if it would be appropriate to share it or not, but...
Sure. Do you feel like you want to share? Go ahead.
Well, I mean, I'm not that knowledgeable about the, so I came in it very green to the process. One thing I thought was good about the new building format was that the airflow, you know, they have new standards which have, I think he said, one-hour turnovers in classrooms because the old design was to bottle everything up and save heating costs and you have a stuffy classroom. And so, the new designs allow for a lot more airflow. Natural lighting gets used a lot more, so it saves electricity and the power efficiency is a lot better for newer designs. And then he talked about the old building, how there are a lot of systems that are out of their life and that would be a significant cost to upgrade those. So, it was just, you begin to see the, and I think a lot of people watching or hearing about the high school building is like, "I don't want to pay for a new high school." Right? You can kind of maybe hear that thought process, but when you start to see like cost of the old high school and efficiencies of a new building, you can start to see how it's going to be comparable, I think, at the end of the day. So, I thought it was a great presentation. I learned a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Does that conclude the MEC update? Are you all set with your report?
I am.
All right, no questions on his report? All right, then we'll move on to item H, the MASC conference in November. Do we have anyone who is able to attend? I know we discussed this last time, I think Rich was going to send us the dates. I believe it's the first week in November.
It's November 2nd through 5th.
Okay.
Which unfortunately for me, it's a mid, it's a week during the week. It ends on Saturday morning, so I won't be able to attend because of my new position.
I think Mr. Young is going to attend for a couple of days, one or two days. Okay, wonderful.
Do we need official vote to appoint him as a...
To vote, Madam Chair, at some point, we're going to vote a voice of our, for, a voice of our committee at the MASC conference for taking votes.
He's got one delegate, right?
We get one delegate?
We have that one delegate, right.
So, probably the recommendation would be, since we know Mr. Young's going, put that on the agenda under action items for next...
Well, I think, I think we've been discussing the conference since he's not here. I think we ought to draft him right here, right now. I don't think there's going to be any change, so we, I'd make the, I would move that, that we select Mr. Young as our, our delegate to the MAS C Conference 2016.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
Rich already said he was going to go, right?
Yeah, yeah.
He did say that he was going to do it.
Yes, he did indicate that the last meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? Okay, eyes have it. Okay, we're moving on to action items. We have one action item tonight. That's the school committee operating protocols. You guys will have those in your Dropbox. I think the only thing that we changed on that was the time to reflect a 7 o'clock start time as opposed to 6:30. So, we just need to make sure those look good and take a vote on those.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Chivononi?
With respect to these operating protocols, they have been, they have been posted, not this 2016-17 one, but the previous ones have been posted on our website, so people can see how, how these operating protocols have been written. And just, just briefly, I'd like to just touch upon it as we do, when we do this, is it's broken down into sections on who we represent, how we govern, how we treat each other here on the committee, how we communicate with each other, and to, to be safe that we don't try to have discussions and stuff, so that's, that's always a good thing. That we, we, we agree that we want to approve, improve ourselves, so how we will improve ourselves, what our limits on powers are. We are, each individual is one of six. We're not, I'm not the school committee, none of us individually is, but we're just one of six and we work together. So, our, and what our powers are, a parent calls us up and says, "I need you to fix this." That's not our response, our role. Our role is to maybe guide them on who to talk to, but we are very limited in power. I, I have no authority to change someone's teacher. So, if you call me and ask me that, it's not going to happen. I am sorry, I can't do that. I can't accommodate it. But the best one is, the last one, which is, what happens when things go wrong? Which is always a great piece because you always, I hate to look ahead and say, "What if something goes wrong? What if something goes sideways?" You know, and it does say, "We're going to work, work to clarify and restate discussions in order to thrive, strive for full understanding." We're going to work together. We're, we're not going to all of a sudden throw our hands together and walk away and, and not accomplish anything. And I have to say that as a school committee, I've sat here now five and a half years and I've seen that we are working together, and it's, it's great to work with a good group of people that we may not always agree, but we always agree to work together. So, I think that these protocols are something that every, every organization should have something like this. It's only two pages, but it's real basic, but they should come, they should agree to it, and then they know how things are going to go on. So, I just wanted to briefly touch upon what these include. I do it each year when we do this, and I would move that we approve the 2016-17 operating protocols as presented this evening.
Second?
A motion and a second discussion?
I fully read these, and I really liked the fact that the very first bullet point, "We represent the needs and interests of all students in the district and place their interest above all others in decisions we make." So, I like, that pretty much says it all for me, that we're here for the students. And I didn't see, I, I like this document. I have no problems with it.
Okay, all those...
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? Yeah. We did all receive a letter from Mr. Powers that came today. I think he's no longer here, but I would recommend that you read through that letter as part of preparation for our next meeting where we, we will have on the discussion item. One of the discussion items is the question-two vote. So, we can talk about that again next, at the October 6th meeting. Did anyone else have any correspondence they would like to share?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
In your packet, there was a memo from Mr. Thompson, addressed to the Middleboro School Committee, and I'd like to recognize the generosity of John and Janet McClutchie, who are the brother and sister-in-law of Mrs. Mary Tessier, who is one of our grade-two teachers. From the bottom of the hearts, they've donated $3,000 for books, a donation of books to the, the HBB Library, the Henry B. Berkland Library. So, I wanted to recognize the generosity of John and Janet McClutchie and thank them very much for their donation through Mrs. Mary Tessier, one of our grade-two teachers. I'd like to also note that the Oak Point Homeowners Association, a great contributor to the Middleboro scholarships, has asked to advertise on the lawn of Middleboro High School in anticipation of their yard sale at Oak Point in early October. The money raised from this yard sale goes directly to a, a number of scholarships.